I'm gonna call this meeting over.
Okay.
On the Bennington Select Board, Saturday morning, January 19th, 2013, in the town office. Time is eight o'clock. Just wanna go over the agenda. What Jason wants in here. Okay. A couple additions to the agenda that was in your packet. Obviously, it's the work session primarily for the Free Library and McCullough Library. I'm adding police. I've asked Paul to come in front of us this morning. You're asked to be here. My concern was, he was with us two weeks ago. And Paul being Paul gave us his presentation. However, I wanna just ask questions and allow the board to ask questions. Based on the activities this past week of the Police Department and others, does he feel that in order to continue to follow the guidance we have given him to increase the presence in the drug enforcement area, is there anything he'd like to bring up there as far as requests for resources? If I may, you may say no, you may say yes. It's something we consider. I just think we need to move that and buddy process now that we know that that's there. Also, we'll go into executive session, finalize personnel contracts and legal. And then we'll come back out and we'll finalize the budget. Okay. So our first one on the agenda today is Lynn, thanks for coming. You have been, in my opinion, one of the greatest supporters of activities in the town, but you've also kept the community informed of what happens at the library. You've appeared in front of the board a number of times. And I wanna thank you for doing that because it's important that our citizens understand what happens over there, our free library and the great work it does. So thanks for coming this morning and in terms of show, what do you?
Okay, thanks for inviting me to come this morning. You've all, I'm thinking that you have to take a look at our budget. I've passed around some little fact sheets to kinda summarize some of the statistics from our last fiscal year. And to those of you that have not been in the library recently or are not intimately familiar with what we do, despite all my public appearances, this little brochure that we created with a banner last year, "No Cost to the Library", is really a good summary of a lot of the services that we provide to the community. I think you all understand that we provide, we cover every demographic in our community. We serve everyone in the community, from children who are pretty literate, literally just learning to walk through the story hours, to children who are in school that have come to us for homework resources, to young families and adults who use library resources to keep their children occupied and their families occupied as well as themselves, to seniors and citizens, those that are on fixed income and really rely very heavily on our free resources. And it goes without saying with almost 78,000 visitors to the library last year, we are major, we're gonna major impact on the vitality in the commerce and the downtown area. We've tried very hard to keep our budget in line. You know, I'm taxpayer in town myself, so I know what the, how that affects us all when budgets go up. We are asking for a 3% increase from the town and slightly more from other communities that contribute to our budget. Most everything, I've tried to really minimize the increases, but of course, you know, with things like electricity and fuel, there's not a lot we can do. I will say that we've achieved some savings in terms of our electric usage last year. We're down 5%, which is pretty significant for building of our size. But of course, the cost keeps going up, so we don't have any control of that. And our use is always during peak periods, so that contributes to the increase there. Fuel, last year they asked us to look into purchasing our fuel through the town. And we did that. I got in touch with Lynn McCleod. He gave me three years of facts and figures. And then we actually found on average, we were paying, we paid 14 cents less a gallon with our current.
Maybe if you had a lot of biofuel through the library, it would be my kind of...
Or through West Oil. But, so we decided to go with them again this year because that seemed to be the best option for the library. But we'll continue to monitor it every year and see at some point if it makes sense for us to switch over and do it differently, we'll do it.
Go back to the energy piece. And, you know, yeah, a large building, but you got an older building too. And I'm thinking, have we done any energy efficient measures as far as in windows or things of that sort in the library in the past?
Well, most recent, every year we try to do a little bit. Last year we had energy, we've actually upgraded most of the wiring in the library at this point, which has helped a lot for our online. In terms of insulation and so on, that's all been achieved in the last few years. I mean, about two years ago, we insulated the Silver Street Building. A few years prior to that, we insulated the Main Street Building. Of course, that building is almost 150 years old. So every, you know, every chance we got, we try to do some work on the efficiency of the building.
What I'm looking at is, I guess, those large windows that we've got, they're difficult to...
The upstairs windows were redone with frame and wrap on it several years ago. And those are, you know, those are efficient windows. The downstairs windows needs to be worked on and where we are at. So we're making, I think, progress in terms of our building maintenance. We're having fewer instances where we have unanticipated and very expensive repairs. Although this year, we are going to replace our underground oil tanks, unshielded. One of them is at least 50 years old. They're not leaking at this point, but of course, we wanna be proactive about that and take care of it before there is a problem. So that will be happening. And we'll be getting a 0% interest loan through the state for that. Personnel costs are up. As you all know, insurance has gone up significantly. We have only, you know, four, part of our staff is actually getting insurance through the library. And we have a 50% copay for insurance costs. But with health insurance and minimum wage going up, that's increased our salary. But we're, our personnel payroll are at 65.6% of the budget. I think that's well below what the standard is for personnel costs.
I think it would be fair to say for people who don't know this, that many of your paid people are making minimum wage or close to minimum wage.
Yes, and when the Vermont minimum wage goes up, they get raised. Let me see. So I guess that's it. Are there any questions?
Well, let me just ask you this one. We're being taped, so this is gonna be show. They're gonna give us a handout this morning. Will you just kinda go over some of the key things? Like what is the annual curriculum register browsers, fitting your fees, your hours? Just so people who watch this understand what's going on, your fees and things of that sort.
Okay. Our annual circulation of materials last year was 95,463. That's up 8.6% over the year before. We have 8,376 registered borrowers. Those are people that use our library regularly and check out books and materials. That's not just people that come in for programs. We added 730 new borrowers this year. That was 410 adults and 320 children. We had 77,948 visitors to the library last year. That's $14.99 a week, almost 6500, 65, excuse me, a month. Last year, we had 207 volunteers that donated 2,408 hours of their time. We trained 1,207 patrons on library computers to access the internet and variety of software programs. This is all at no charge. People can come in and learn at their leisure, get a lot of one-on-one help from the staff. On average, 200 people use the library computers weekly. And that gives them access to internet, high-speed internet for free. They have to pay for their printing costs. But in general, when the economy went through a downturn, people were starting to give up their internet access at home. And we saw a big uptick in people coming to the library to use our computers. They also get technical assistance, and that's invaluable. And over 10,000 hours of free use was logged on library computers last year by the public. We have 76,963 items in our collection. That's books, videos, CDs, and even cassettes at this point, VHS, although we're phasing those out. 93% of the funds received from Bennington were spent locally last year. I think that's an important figure. And 69% of our total budget is spent locally. We receive grants from the Department of Libraries, the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging through SVSU. Last year, we received 10,000 grants for historic preservation, which helped us pay for replacement of all five of our chimneys. And last year, we received funds from Efficiency Vermont for electrical upgrades. Meeting room was used by 54 organizations. And our patrons received 221 books from other libraries, which is a great savings for us, actually, the Interlibrary Loan Program. We do pay a bit in postage to send books out to other libraries. And as the fourth largest library in the state, we are regularly called upon to loan books to other libraries, but the state does subsidize that cost. So it's a, it's a very good program for us.
Okay, let me go around and start with Justin this time. Any questions, Justin?
Um, none at this point, Joe, I don't.
Okay, great.
Regarding the computer needs, obviously, computers have lives that kind of soften, softly go away. Where do you feel you stand on that? To me, that's a big, you know, a big asset to the community. It's hard to go to school without access to a computer. And if your family doesn't have one, you know, that's pretty much their resource.
That, what we're trying to do on a rotating basis is to replace one or two computers a year, and that's included in this budget.
Thank you.
Justin.
Can I just observationally make the comment? Last year's budget for the library was about 485,000. It's up about 15,000, which is 3%. Certainly commens or less than what the town increase appears to be across the board. Lynn's done a nice job on fuel oil in particular, increasing that by over $2,000, almost 10%. The big places where this budget seems to be increasing are the same places where our budgets increase, just as Lynn said, salary, the commens or payroll taxes with those and employee benefits. My position's going to be to approve this as requested.
Okay, Sharon.
I just wanna say that I've enjoyed serving as the board's representative with you. And to let you all know that I'm mightily impressed by Lynn and just all that you do to keep the budget down. Great community resource.
Sharon?
Yeah, I think Lynn's done a great job too. And I, you know, echo Jason's comments because you can't do anything about the salaries and the benefits unless you just don't give any at all. So I support the increase in the budget too.
One thing too, the minimum wage is automatic. We have no choice in that. Let's look at that a few years ago. You know, that just happens to go. My only question, go back to the fifth for organizations, Lynn. Are these folks paying a fee to use the meeting room?
Yes.
All of them, or we have any examples?
Yeah, some years ago, a couple of years ago, you suggested that actually has worked well for us. We charge nonprofits a minimal $10, but everybody else pays anywhere from 25 to 50, whatever. So we're, we are really enforcing that. And that's worked well. We're happy to, happy to do that. But it's, it's such a small amount. And most, we were a little worried that people might kick at having to pay a little bit too and so forth. But we understand that, I mean, we have to pay for electric, we have to pay for air conditioning, we have to pay for heat. No one has complained, so that's worked very well for us. It was a good suggestion, we're happy to adopt it.
Some people might have picked up on what you said earlier that the outlying communities are paying slightly more. Do you wanna give percentage of something compared to the other, the outlying districts? They are contributing to our library?
They are, yes.
Okay, another great job, both in preparation of budget and the fact sheet. And at some point in time in the next fiscal year, we'll ask you again to come in front of the Select Board, just to see your smiling face and talk to our citizens on how important it is and the services you provide. Because as we, as we hear from folks, they're looking for things to do. And there are a lot of things to do, and a lot of them are right here in the library.
Thank you.
So, anyone, any final questions, Lynn?
Just, 'cause I'm gonna make a motion that we provide the request as requested.
Okay, a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just for the record, 369, 150, is that correct?
369, 150, correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's 6-4, one absent. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody from North Bennington or...
They weren't scheduled to late 3:00.
Late 3:00, okay. Paul's not here.
Yeah, and Michelle just informed me that Paul needs to go to Burlington today.
Ooh, okay. All right, well, let me, let me ask the board then. Yeah, our police chief's a very thorough guy, even though he knew what was going down. And that, he probably took into consideration, I would hope, when he prepared his budget to follow up on, on what he needs to do based on the success we've had this week. Do you feel there's a need to ask Paul to readjust the budget before we take action on it? Or at least not adjust it, but at least appear prompt?
You know, if you'll recall, I did ask him that question. He said, sit tight. Something, you know, and there was a comment made, you know, it was pretty clear, wait, wait a couple of weeks, so...
Well, how do you, you feel comfortable that he included this in when he prepared us? Because he gave us a good budget.
He gave us a good budget. Mike, he's forgotten more about the police budget than I'm gonna know about the police budget and police work, so I'd leave it to Paul. We don't need to sign the warrant for another several days.
Once the warning is set, we'll ask you to sign it on the 28th.
But you give us 10 days, nine days right now. My thought would be...
My conversations with him, at least today, have been that we really don't need any additional funding at this time. Much of this, this whole effort was paid for with state, state grant funds. So we really haven't even broken into the monies that we provided to him last year. So, but we'll clarify that.
Maybe he could provide you some comments on that, and then we can make a last minute decision. And if we move it up a few thousand, particularly on the drug line that we were talking about.
We're talking about one line item.
We're talking about one line item, an 18-page budget. It shouldn't be that.
What's the date we need to have it signed by?
28th.
The next Monday.
We sign, yeah.
And that gives us a meeting in between?
No, that's, no. But this is a quarter off. I think we make phone call, we can come in here on short notice and warrant real quick and take action. Going out thorough Paul is, and in fact, he said, wait out. He probably adds up in the back of his mind, but let's, yeah, we'll go ahead and try to, we'll take final action today on the budget with the caveat that if the police chief comes back, Stuart talks to you that he would like to address us on that phone line item, we'll go ahead and call a special session and do so. Okay, agreeable, everybody? Okay, let's see. Anything we wanna review, want to refer to the last two weeks while we're waiting for somebody? I mean, we've, we've had, we got RJ here, we've got Terry here, well, Terry's not here, we got Larry, we got Mike.
Well, did we decide what we were gonna do with the trucks? Because we've got this memo here from RJ.
Now, the memo that RJ sent out to you was really to clarify, apparently, that thanks in part to the banner article that originally appeared about the budget, there are many people in the community that think that his requests for trucks are more tandems. And these are regular sized, it's okay, see? So he's been accosted on the street about getting more tandem trucks. And he wanted to let you folks know and make sure that the community knows. We're talking about regular dump trucks in these requests, we're not, we're not looking to acquire more tandem trucks.
Will we see that? Well, let me, let me bring something to the highway because there's gonna be up at the end, but let's do it now. And we may have to continue once after we hear from, think. But last year and some previous years, we asked the voters to approve additional funds for highway. I wanna give a sense of the board, how do you feel this year on doing that? We'll start with, again, Justin.
I think we're at a point right now in the budget where we have as much included total in the budget as we've gone out and asked for additional approval on last year. I think at this point, I'm comfortable leaving it where it is, knowing that it seems as though we're gonna be able to go at least as far as we had in the last construction season in this upcoming one with the monies that we've allocated. So at this point, I would, wouldn't have the support of making an additional question on the budget for that.
Great, Jim.
I would be opposed to any kind of question on the budget when the charter clearly says that it's the Select Board's responsibility to make these decisions.
Yeah, but we still have the authority to ask the voters for this. I mean, voters, we just prepare the budget.
I don't deny that.
It's their budget, okay. Jason.
Yeah, I really echo what Justin said. I think he's right. We're at a point where we were last year, there's enough increases going around. While RJ's here, if you can, on the fly, I might, you know, just to remind us and the viewing public, this highway and sidewalk, the street and sidewalk projects you've got, but I recall from two weeks ago, it was a pretty good list. You know, and they did a great job last year. It's worth stating, I think there's no doubt in the last couple of years, the Highway Department has gotten more sidewalks and more miles of road fixed than we had in previous years. I don't think we're ever gonna get back to the 10 miles of road. That's really a function of the cost of materials more than anything. That's not, that's not a comment on the town staff or any contractor that we use. That's just an economic fact unless we wanna do it, really blow the budget up. So, you know, really, for the reasons Justin said, I think he's right. This year, we've done it, I think, two of the last four years. I don't think we need to do that this year.
Great.
I tend to agree with Jim that we, we need to take responsibility for the budget more often than not, you know, and make that decision based on our needs. I'm comfortable with the number where we are right now. I don't wanna see the Safford Bradford fall off the map. You know, there's some significant properties over there on Bradford Street. You've got a pedestrian access to shopping on Main Street. You've also got a significant private investment in the old Bradford mansion, turning that into a new office and residence. So I think, I think we do have an obligation to keep that part of town up as people invest in it and rely on it. Not getting done this year, I would really wanna see that get done next year, you know?
That would be the plan.
That would be the plan. So, I mean, you know, I'd love to see it done this year, but I'm comfortable with the numbers this year. I don't know that we need to tag that on everything.
Sharon?
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my only concern was that project that we brought, you know? And if possible, I would love to see it included this year, but, you know, it's, it's good. I just, we really didn't decide on the trucks, did we? We were gonna put that aside until the end of the...
You're talking about whether or not we go with the lease option or...
Yeah, purchase them and then the, the skid steer.
I don't think we made that final decision.
Let me throw in on this other piece first, and then we'll go there. First, I concur with what I'm hearing on the board. I think this is time to break. We did, we did great work last year. We do have other construction projects that go on. Isn't Don Street Bridge going on this, this time, this year?
Could possibly go forward.
There's gonna be, there's gonna be some other construction going on. And, you know, I just think, one, give taxpayers a break. And at the same time, there'll be other things going on here. So I think, I think we're there. Okay, let's, let's have it.
Come on in, Rachel.
Hi, Rachel. If you'll come in, just sit down, we'll be right with you. I have a second to front.
Sure.
Let's, let's wrap up on this truck thing. Let's go ahead. Review the truck piece one more time for us, RJ.
I'm requesting two single axle dump trucks to replace two single axle dump trucks, larger ones, not one ton type. Yeah, the two that would be replaced are two 2004s, which we're spending a considerable amount of money the last two years on. They're very rusty. They've been, had a lot of downtime this winter. I think it would be really a good move to replace the two.
Okay, Stuart, on options for purchase, are what?
Uh, we, we're looking at at least purchase over seven years, approximately $40,000 or $45,000 total for both trucks over those seven years.
Let's go around here. Jim, you hear your feelings on it? We need him, we gotta get him.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I remember last week, just refresh my memory, we were talking about a reserve fund and whether or not we pulled all the money out of reserve and put it toward this, or pulled out a portion and saved some in that reserve. Do you remember what the details were around that?
Well, that had to do with the fire equipment.
Okay, that was, okay. I was gonna make sure we were talking about, we're talking about...
Yeah, we, we have created a highway reserve now, but that's really mostly for construction with bridge work. We don't have a reserve.
I just, yeah, I wasn't sure if I was getting 52's.
Jason, on the, on the highway trucks.
I got the question three or four times myself about why are we buying more tandems? Thanks for clarifying and, you know, you know, I, I knew they were single axles and said that, but I was told I was wrong, so...
I also was told those were wrong.
Thinking to myself, you know, the budget's an ugly thing, it's complex. I know you guys, like I said, you know, you guys have probably forgotten more about the intricacies than any of us really know about it. A lot of times, you know, we, we look closely at it.
Yeah, it's in the banner, it's all right.
But, you know, I was thinking, geez, I was at that meeting, I remember asking RJ about that. I know the difference between single axle and tandem, but maybe my earring went. It sounds to me, just to confirm, this isn't an apples to oranges, this is apples to apples, it's replacing two trucks that by the time you get to replace them, at the end of 2013, are gonna be 10 years old.
Correct.
Unfortunately.
Great.
I am as well. I think the department's done a good job in getting life out of vehicles and turning them over when they're still worth something and, you know, moving on. I'm not a big fan of pouring a lot of money into repairs on old machinery and that. I think this is a better way to go.
Yeah, Justin.
I think I pretty much echo what Greg just said. I don't want to throw money at repairs either. I think this is gonna get us in a position where we have some warranties and a cut down on maintenance costs. I'm gonna support it.
Okay, Sharon?
Yeah, it's getting to the point where we're spending a lot of money on repairs, so I would be in favor of it too. Could you put "single" and bold cap on the banner this week?
Okay, and I, and I concur. And we'll vote on the highway budget when we go through, when we finish this. Did you ask us, I'll say on trucks?
Nope.
Okay. We're ready for you.
Oh.
You'll have a seat up here so we can...
Okay.
You don't want that coming in Saturday morning? Cold out there. We're here to talk about the budget for the John McCullough Free Library in Bennington. So the floor is yours. Why don't you address the board for what you have to tell them?
Well, if we look at the budget, I sent you a five-year budget that attached to the package. One thing we are very, very strict with is the expenses, is the budget. If you look at from 2009 to 2013, we haven't even gone up 1%. It's .7 of 1%. Like I said, we're extremely strict. We just finish hours of, every year, four of us have committed on a budget, this amount is on it. The largest expense is the salary, as it is in anybody's budget. $68,000 a year, which includes librarian, part-time, the children's librarian, very much part-time, and two other desk assistants, the circulation desk. I'm the treasurer, I've been there 20 years. All my work is volunteer. I do all the accounting to save the money. So, and we do not give benefits to our employees. We can't afford it, they're all part-time. So the total budget is $104,000. Back in 2009 was $103,000. So I just wanted to say that we're trying very much to stay open and we do our best to keep our expenses.
Okay, for, just for the folks that are gonna see this on tape, just a little bit of the numbers you're asking for us to include in the budget. What is the final number?
I would like an increase of $400. I believe this is what I've asked for.
For a total of?
For a total of $13,400.
Okay.
The rest we have to do with other appropriation and fundraising, and it's quite difficult.
Did you more understand what they're asking for? Okay, Justin?
Um, I think it's a very modest increase. Obviously, $400 doesn't go very far at all for anything these days. The only, the only thing that I would just kinda say is that I noticed in here, looking through some of this, that you have meeting room space that it seems that you don't charge for in every situation. We've encouraged the Bennington Library to do that. Maybe that's something you could look at and try and...
We don't have meeting rooms. We have to meet, we meet in the children's library.
Okay.
And that thing is private.
Okay, I just, I seen here it says, "Library provides meeting space for nonprofit groups at no cost," so...
Yeah, but we actually, that happened probably twice, and we've had to cram.
Just as a suggestion, I might not be nitpicking anyone.
And I'm all for charging for it, by the way.
Just as a way to try and create some revenue, because I understand $400.
I know, usually you give me like 2% or something like that, but thank you. But that only amounts to a couple hundred dollars. What can we do with that? So I was saving about $400.
Jim? Jason?
All four.
Great.
Yeah, I don't know how many of us would've got through school without the public libraries, so I think $400.
Right, and also, our school in North Bennington, the children's very, very active. We have a very active program for the children, and this is where, that's what we want, is our young children, children to...
And it's money well spent.
Thank you very much.[1705.05]
Sharon?
Yeah, it's fine.
Sorry to bring you in so early just for five minutes.
No, that's okay. Now I'm going to go have lunch.
Well, thanks for coming in. Thanks for the hard work you do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Everybody else does a great thing.
And all my work in the library is, is what I'm here to say with my own dear, to save the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give a hat.
Thanks, Rachel.
We're at a point now where we're going to executive session for a short, for a period of time.
Do you want to have on that request, Joe?
Was that?
Do you want to take a vote on that request?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve that.
Okay, Greg this time?
Yeah.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? And it's six, four, one absent.
Who seconded?
Uh, Jason.
Do we need to do, do we have anything we needed to do with this, with the recent fire truck?
What I intend to do is when we get back to finalize the budget, we're going to go through each one at once and just see if there's any wrap up. That's where we'll go talk about the fire trucks and other actions we have to take. And we'll just go section by section and then finalize the budget. That's just so I can try to keep it organized in my head.
Excellent. I just wanted to make a question.
For the folks here, we are going to come back into open session after the executive session. So, you know, if you want to grab a cup of coffee or something or whatever. But right now, I'm entertaining a motion to go to executive session. Personnel, contract, legal. Justin's motion, ready, second. All in favor? Six, four, and yes? Everybody on the red.
Because I'll get in the press.
Still trying to figure out how to do something. I move we go back into executive session to discuss a contract.
Okay, I have a motion to go back to executive session. Do I have a second? You have a second. All in favor? Six, four. Apologize for.
Need me to say something to recap?
I move that Terry Morse get a better sense of humor.
They're giving you a better sense of humor. The great and powerful Oz is giving it.
Okay, let's, let's review the history of the budget changes that we had in our packet today. Most disagree on that. More disagree on that. Is it basically the changes we made last week?
Yes, last week, last, last week, we reduced the overall amount to be raised by taxes by an additional 16,000, bringing the total in amount to be raised by taxes to a negative 141,700. Today would be, and you haven't voted on the changes in the salaries for those, the salaries you set. If those are accepted, you would have raised the budget approximately 5,100 dollars overall.
Okay. Any questions on that?
One question.
Go ahead.
When we say raise 5,100 dollars, in the current revision D to the budget, some of those increases were already in there, I believe, weren't they? So it would only be what we changed.
Yes, it's only what you changed. Yeah, it's only the, it's only the.
But my point is, is the 5,100 dollars in cumulative raises, most of that raise was already in the budget, I believe, as presented to us in revision A, B, C, and D.
Except, yeah, I, I think you're right, probably except for mine.
Right.
I think the town clerk was in.
And I think.
And I think there was a sufficient funds in Johnny's budget to cover that.
Right. Are you saying that putting 5,100 dollars back on?
That's, that's, that was the, that's the total impact of the, of the proposed raises that you've made, which would include the FICA, small amount pension.
Only for the three people.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is cumulatively, we raised those salaries about less than 5,100 dollars and adding in the FICA. And what I'm saying is, is in revision A, B, C, and D already, some of those raises were already in there and we've modified them a little bit, so it should be less than 5,100 dollars.
Yeah, I, I'd have to, you'd have to give me time to make that calculation. So I, I think if you adopt the budget as amended by the changes in salary, give me a chance to get, make sure I get those accurate before.
But it's not a 5,100 dollars.
It probably is not.
No, that's that.
Okay, so the issue now, let me bring up the fire trucks. Let's decide on the fire trucks.
Yes, as they will go back to municipal leasing corp. And they confirmed that if you wanted to set your annual payment beginning in FY 2015 at 30,000 dollars a year, you would be looking at a 15-year purchase price at, and committing approximately 37,000 dollars in reserves from the fire equipment. We have 141,030 dollars currently in reserve. We will, at the end of this year, add an approximately another 30,000 to that to bring it to 171,000. Taking 37,000 out, drops it down into the 134,000 range.
And we'd have a 30,000 dollar a year payment for 15 years, kind of 20-year truck.
That's right.
And what's the, what was the intention of only using 36,100 from the available reserve?
That's just to bring the annual payment down to.
Why not use more though? There was, there was, we had a discussion last week about.
Well, the concern is that in, in 2018, we're going to be looking at purchasing a new aerial truck.
Okay.
And, and that's going to be a massive expense. We don't want to, the request from the fire department and, and the chief, and I agree, is we don't want to reduce that reserve so significantly that we would strap them at that purchase cost.
What do we have into, going into the budget for, to be actually adding to the reserves this year going forward?
30,000. 30,000.
And Justin, one, for the numbers that we had in the last packet, I just did total pricing, same way as when I buy a car. What am I paying bottom line at the end? And to me, it wasn't worth completing the reserve based on the rate of financing and whatnot. I really think, I think this is a good.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
And addresses the chief's concerns.
And when is the first payment due on this? It's fiscal year 15, you said?
It's one year after the truck is received and accepted. So I'm, I'm anticipating if they go out to bid now, nine-month construction period. It's going to, it's going to arrive sometime in FY 2015 and we would pay one year after that. So it may in fact, depending on how long it takes to build this vehicle, not actually occur until 2016.
Are we deferring any interest by waiting, by not paying a payment until one year after the truck is received?
Well, we pay a slightly higher interest rate over the life of a purchase. But remember, we're going to be taking the sale price of the two vehicles and committing that against the purchase price first thing. So it probably balances out because we've reduced the price of the purchase significantly, depending on the sale of those two vehicles.
Any other questions on fire truck, from anybody? Motion to accept that piece?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that's six, four, one absent. Okay, so now, uh, do we want to do this in general? Or do we have any other issues on revision D of the budget we have here we want to discuss? And we just want to make a motion on the entire budget or we want to go section by section? How does the board want to do this?
I think we have to do the salaries.
Salaries.
And I would suggest we just do the full budget as one whole.
Okay. All right, salaries. Let's start with the motion of town treasurer.
I move we make the salary of the town treasurer 13,000 dollars in fiscal year 14.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on our town treasurer? If not, all in favor? That's six, four, one absent. Our town clerk?
I move we make the town clerk's salary 74,000 dollars in fiscal 14.
Any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, staying from that one, Joe.
Okay, all in favor? Five, four, one extension, one absent. For town manager?
I move we make the town manager's salary 97,685 in fiscal 14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we get to the budget.
I, I move we look towards the budget in a final amount of 8 million. Check my math here, Stu. 8,933,340.
I thought it was 38.
No, it was 38,340.
Well, can we perhaps just accept the budget as amended today? And let me work on those salaries and I'll get your bottom line.
5,100.
The 5,100. It's going to, it's going to change, it'll be a little less than that because there is, some of those monies are already in the budget.
I'll amend that motion to move as pre-letting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Six, four, one absent. Okay, in general terms, those people are going to ask and I'm sure it's going to be in the paper. As amended roughly, and I understand you got, it's going to come down a little bit from the number you gave us. Can you recap what that means as far as an increase and also impact on taxes? Generally close to, knowing it might be a little bit off.
The entire, the entire budget highway, fire, and general fund has been increased about 3.25 percent. And that will have an impact on the tax rate of 2.7 cents.
Okay.
Roughly.
Is that clear? Okay, I just want to thank one of the town staff for the hard work again presenting a budget that's reasonable. I want to assure the taxpayers out there, we've taken a hard look over three sessions of this. I think we feel pretty comfortable that the numbers we've come up with and what we need to make sure we maintain a very safe and secure neighborhood, allowing us to put work on the infrastructure that we need to do to, to catch up. So everybody involved in preparation. I appreciate the hard work you went into for the select board. Appreciate the hard work we all went through, you all went through, going line by line. So we can have a reasonable discussion on this budget. So are there any other issues we want to talk about on the budget? Is there any other issue that cannot wait that you want to bring up members before a meeting a week from Monday? Okay, now, any or any motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And that's six, four, one absent. Thank you, folks.
Good job.